Southern Shores Town Council from November the 8th, 2017 is now in session. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please join the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, united in heaven, and with the love of God.
Since our last meeting, there's been some pretty horrific things that have happened in our country not caused by terrorists, per se. The major incident in Las Vegas took so many lives and caused so much harm to people. And then, of course, the more recent shooting in the church in Texas. Let's just keep those families, those people who are suffering in our thoughts this evening. Join me in putting them on the silence if you will. Thank you. Counsel, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's approved for the night's meeting. Thank you. I need a meeting, counsel, to, a motion, counsel, to improve the consent agenda, which is in minutes for October the 3rd, 2017, tab one in your book. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda is for night, night's meeting is approved. Thank you. This time I'll call our town planner, Wes Haskett. Good evening, Wes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a brief report for you tonight for the month of October. Seven zoning permits were issued, 22 building permits were issued. They consisted of four new single-family dwellings, three remodels, one accessory for repairs, and 10 others. There are currently 25 single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees collected in October was $14,028.93. With respect to the town planning board, the November 20th planning board meeting has been canceled, and the board will meet on December the 4th at 5:30 to hold a special meeting to continue discussion of Module 1 of the Town Code Update project, and the topic of that evening will be tree removal on private property. Any questions?
Nothing to that, but over at the marketplace, is that area that they're doing the site work, is that going to be the home to the Starbucks, or is that part of that septic program?
That is part of the septic area. The state deemed that area as repair area, and the Marketplace Shopping Center is replacing the entire septic system. So, the previous, the site plan you all approved, that included the Starbucks and the multi-tenant building, that's not going to be happening, at least not in that location. I have had discussions with representatives from the shopping center, and they're considering options to maybe have another site plan where they could do something, maybe in another area on the property, maybe in the northeast corner that's currently a parking area. So, they're considering options, and maybe they'll come back to us with something else. But, as far as I know, that's off the table.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
25 homes under construction right now. You just mentioned that.
Correct.
Single-family homes.
25.
Is that, is that some sort of a record, Wes, or is that just an average thing during, back during the peak days?
It's pretty high, and here lately it was 23 in my last report. 25 is pretty high. I think we got up to 26 at one point, so I think that's the record since I've been here, since, that's in '09. So, it's been consistently in the twenties. I mean, that's very impressive for the small area that we have.
It is.
So, yeah, we're staying busy.
Any other questions for Wes, anyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
David Cole, our police chief. Good evening, David.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The October 2017 police report, we had 2,059 calls for service. You can see the breakdown in the pie chart of some of the higher calls for service. Under the incidents, which are the crimes that are actually reported to us, we had 11 of those. We had two criminal arrests, we only had one motor vehicle accident. Officers conducted 65 traffic stops. Out of that 65 traffic stops, they issued 22 citations and another 29 warning citations. And we had zero ordinance violations for the month of October. If you have any questions?
Questions, anyone?
Is that 2,059?
Yes.
Isn't that a high number for us?
Yes, because we weren't getting credit for a lot of the things that the officers were doing. What I, what I started doing is, is the county keeps track of all of our self-initiated calls and our initiated calls that, that come from outside. And I started looking at our numbers and trying to figure out why some of the agencies were higher. And what we were doing was, a lot of times, the officers, they're required, for example, when they do a property check at the marketplace, they get out and they physically rattle the doors. They were only putting down, even though they're checking every business, they were only putting down one. Well, that's not fair to them, and, and I think it's important that the public understand what these officers are doing. So, you're going to see much more accurate numbers.
That's probably why the business check, number one, up to the 2,059 was the method of accounting for it.
That's correct. Thing else?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Ed Limbacher, our fire chief. Evening, Ed.
Little bit slower for us this month, unfortunately, or fortunately for us, but this, for the month of October, the fire department responded to only 39 calls. That's actually 27 behind last year, so, no rhyme or reason, just the way it worked out. And it broke down as two patient assists, 22 medical calls, one accident, one service call, one assist to police, six public service, and five alarms with one citizen complaint. Any questions on the actual report? Pretty simple this month, actually fairly slow.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I want to thank your, the fire department for their open house and working with the schools program over there. I happen to take a couple of the classes, one on the AED and one on fire prevention using fire extinguishers, so, as I told you earlier, I've ended up putting it to use already.
No good deed goes unpunished.
Yeah. Not that I've had to use an AED, I've just, I gotta, now I gotta be responsible for making sure it works.
I would just add that, two things. One was the open house that we had, it was a pretty good turnout, and we're lucky we have the school with us to pull that draw. A lot of departments down here don't have that, and it's not as well-attended as ours is. But, it's a big success. We get to work, you know, of course, the police are there, we're there, all the administrators from the school, so it kind of puts us all on the kind of same page with the kids and things like that. We do different things, all of you have seen the smokehouse and, you know, different activities we have with the classes. That was actually fairly, fairly well-attended, and we also did the Halloween detail, which people really seemed to like, and a couple of our people this year, I don't know many who don't know Mayor White, but he runs the NC Aquarium. He dressed up like a, can't remember what animal it was, some fish, whatever it was. But, the kids really seemed to like it, so that went over pretty well also. And one last thing about the building, I wanted to give you a quick update. I talked to Ken today, that's the architect from Stuart Cooper and Neil. Basically, he's done drawing the floor plans, he's going to finish them up this week, and he's going to be moving on to some outside sketches, so hopefully in January, we'll have some pictures to show everybody and share and see what direction we're going here, so... Anybody have any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ed. Town manager, Peter Rasko. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the November, actually for the October report of town operations, I want to report to you that upcoming, our biologist for the, from the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, as we reported in the town's E-News, will be conducting a coyote conflict management workshop here in the Pet Center on Wednesday, December the 6th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. We put that in the E-News and also on the website, and, so we'll do, we'll continue to do that, and hopefully that'll draw interest. Also, the, I'm informed by our, the town's coastal engineer that the beach nourishment profile study is set to begin in the next two weeks, so hopefully that'll be accomplished during November and December, and they can make a report back to the council as they were contracted to do about the condition of all the, the beach, the beachfront of the town. The town's landscaping contractor for tree plantings at the East Dogwood and North, and NC 12 Highway Stormwater Infiltration Area is still waiting on the trees that we selected for that plan to go dormant before planting. He anticipates that either the last week of November or the first week of December, when temperatures are cool enough for the plantings to occur. The fiscal year 1718 infrastructure projects that the council approved, an update, first, the Palmetto Lane bids are before you tonight on the agenda, as you directed they be brought back to you. Also, the other projects, the Clamshell Trail Improvement Project, the preliminary design has been completed, as I notified the council members individually, that plan is available for inspection, and the meetings with individual property owners in that project area are underway right now, with a, with an owners' meeting actually coming up. Also, on Skyline Road, that preliminary design for stormwater improvement at the intersection with NC 12 was completed. It is out for notice now to the adjacent property owners, and all of these mentioned are posted and, excuse me, posted online and available at the town hall for public inspection. We put them out there for that. The last one that the council did approve, Yopon Trail, the Camel Major Permit is still pending, the application for a Camel Major Permit is still pending for that project, and recall, the Camel Major Permit is a request to extend the town's right-of-way in an eastward location, east of the existing right-of-way line, so that it creates more area there to work with. The Section 401 Water Quality Certification required by the Clean Water Act, as part of that permit, has been issued, so we're still waiting for final issuance on that permit. Hopefully, it will come in time to win, for a design of at least a part of that project can be accomplished, and a portion of it can be under, or bid at least, or, and under contract by the end of the fiscal year, as I hope. So, we continue to push for that permit. Lastly, as many of you know, in the, in the newsletter, the town's E-News, the Veterans' Day Ceremony that we conduct here annually at Southern Shores will be held on Saturday, November the 11th, at 11 o'clock. It's a joint ceremony hosted by a town of Southern Shores and put on partially by the Knights of Columbus, and I'm happy to say that this year's speaker is the Southern Shores Police Department Officer George Pharoah, who is an Air Force veteran himself. So, he will actually be speaking at the ceremony. So, hopefully we'll have folks there in attendance, and the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department will serve as color guard for that ceremony. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions on town operations, if there are any.
Any questions, council?
Nope, I don't have any.
Chris?
Peter, I know you sent council an update on this, but could you talk to the public about your efforts on the paths and the tourism, the tourism board grants?
Yes. I don't have the exact amount. Councilman Holland is a member of the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, but the Visitors Bureau and also lately, the Dare County Board of Commissioners approved a grant to the town of Southern Shores for a significant amount to go towards a walkway along East Dogwood Trail. It is a matching grant, meaning that we have to actually do a project there in order to claim reimbursement from the grant. It would also be available July 1 of 2018, so, that would allow, if the council wanted to make a plan for such an infrastructure amenity during the budget season prior to July 1, 2018, that would be the time to do that. So, it would be a reimbursement grant, so we'd have to spend the money for a project to get it back. And Leo, I can't remember the exact amount, you may have it, though?
I can't remember right off. The total grants, because it involved DUC, Southern, the town of Southern Shores and the Civic Association was like 400, and we allocated 442,000. We didn't, could not approve what each entity had requested because we didn't have the funds there for it. But, it's a three-step process. The steering committee of the, has to approve it, then the total board has to approve it, and then before final approval, the county commissioners have to approve it. And it's, as he said, it's performance-based, you have to do the work, provide the, Diane there with all your work orders and invoices that they're completing, and they'll got you the check for, for the amount. It's about, it's not quite 50% of the project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Peter mentioned the plantings at the, at the infiltration basin on East Dogwood and Highway 12, and I think we've had an unusually warm fall, which has impacted plants that would normally go into dormancy and be starting to show fall color, or even losing their leaves by this time of year in our area, would, are not doing that. I see it in my own yard, I see it in other areas I go, just the trees are holding their foliage a lot longer, and that makes it more difficult for these, the contractor to dig them, he wants them dormant if possible. Anyway, hopefully we'll get through that and get this job finished by the end of the month, end of November. Town attorney?
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Our planning board, Mr. Sam Williams? Good evening, Sam.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight, I'd like to report on the planning board action on one of the complex issues that we identified in Module 1 for the Town Code Update. And it's the stormwater, and it's a complex issue, and not all stormwater runoff is a result of a single storm. Frequency of rainstorms is a factor. You may have three rainstorms in a week and no stormwater problems until the third one. And, so that's something we had to consider. Also, there are parts of Southern Shores that the water table is relatively close to the ground, and so if you've got rain, sometimes the fact that the runoff occurs or ponds is a result of the high-water table. So, these were some things that the planning board had to consider during our review of the proposed options by the contractor. And there were seven different options that the contractor had proposed for consideration. We reviewed all those, and our recommendations for language in the Town Code Update is to keep the existing language in the Town Code with a few amendments. And those amendments, and there are four of them, is, the first one is, before a permit is issued, require an engineer certification that the proposed stormwater retention plan will be in compliance with the ordinance. Currently, the town manager or his designee, in this case Wes, decides what stormwater management is required and puts that on, on the permit. And we were concerned about possible liability issues, so that's why we put that recommendation in. The second recommendation is to give the town manager or his designee the ability to modify lot disturbance and stormwater permit prior to completion of construction if a stormwater runoff problem occurs on an adjacent property. Currently, after the contractor gets the permit, if there's an issue, all that the town can do is make a suggestion to the, to the contractor, could you put in a temporary berm until you've finished with your landscaping and put in the retention pond? But, even though we've had pretty good luck with contractors' compliance, there's always the case where a contractor could say, "No, I'm not going to do it." And so, the problem for the, the person in the next lot, the only solution is to go into, into court to try to get, seek a remedy for, for damages and that sort of thing. The, the third one is that no fill material may be placed on a lot in the side setback areas unless the final vertical-to-horizontals slope is in a ratio equal to or less than 1 to 3. We've all seen construction projects where fill has been used, and right after you get away from the house a foot, the fill drops off like that. And the reason for the, the 1 to 3 requirement is to reduce not only the runoff, but also a more gentle slope provides more time for rainwater to be absorbed. The last amendment, stormwater improvements must be maintained to be in compliance with the ordinance. Oftentimes, people will put in something to deal with stormwater, and after three years, four years, five years, it's no longer working. Leaves have filled in a, in a ditch, a berm has been broken someplace, so this is an attempt to give the town a little teeth in, if there's a problem after a few or several years, that it can, the town can go back and say, "You need to keep this in good repair." So, those are the four recommendations. If council agrees to, to these recommended changes, the next step is to pair a draft ZTA. And there was some discussion of whether we should let the contractor provide this draft language for the council to act on, or whether staff, town staff should be, do the preparation of this draft ZTA. And the recommendation is to have the, the town council direct staff to prepare the draft ZTA for planning board review. The reason for this is it's a quicker way to change the town code. Recently, there have been concerns on, on some of the things that the amendments address, and if we had to wait for a contractor to report, in his final report on this, it is going to be months and months away before we get that final draft from the contractor. Secondly, the, the same process, that is the town staff preparing a draft ZTA, the same process was used for lot coverage and for building height changes. So, we know that that process works, and we can get those things into the town code relatively quickly. That's my report. Do you have any questions? Fred?
Yeah, I've got one, Sam. Does the existing ordinance, does it have provisions for the property owner to maintain or to retain the same amount of stormwater after construction as they did, or even during this construction as they did before construction began?
The current code says that property owners, owners have to retain stormwater on their property, and so that is in effect for everybody, even after construction. So, if there is a problem that develops later after construction, they're still responsible for maintaining that stormwater.
That same amount of stormwater?
Same amount of stormwater.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
But, isn't that, isn't that also, to add to yours, they're only required, I believe, to capture an inch and a half, Wes?
An inch and a half rainfall event, yes.
So, so that, that's, I'm just mentioning that because, you know, if you have a major rain event like a Hurricane Matthew, you're not going to do it. There's, you're going to have issues.
I understand. I went to the meeting, I heard all the discussion arguments, as a matter of fact, that meeting was about, was longer than one of ours, I think, but, there was a lot of good discussion. I just wanted to be sure, because we did discuss that, and I wanted to be sure our ordinance included that. I wasn't aware.
Did you, and, and we were limited in terms of how many people could go, did you guys in your discussion talk about situations where homeowners are receiving stormwater from city, city properties, albeit roads mostly? Did you guys discuss that? Because sometimes their homeowners are taking that, and that stormwater that's really not theirs.
It, it was discussed, and currently the policy for stormwater runoff from streets onto private lots is to fix that problem when a street is rebuilt.
Okay.
And if there are cases where, you know, we feel, the town feels it's really important to handle that, those can be handled on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Any other questions for Sam?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'd, I'd make a motion to direct staff to draft a zoning text amendment for stormwater management consistent with the planning board's recommendations, as recommended by our, our chairman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's made and carried to direct staff to draft a zoning text amendment for stormwater management. Thank you. This time I'll open general public comment. Thank you, David. Good afternoon, Claire.
Good evening. When I was here last month and played beat the clock and lost, I was telling you about all the problems that we have on Fairway Drive, and, and our town manager suggested that I interview the rest of the people on the street, perhaps bring letters from them about things that they feel have gone wrong. I did that. I have letters, emails from all nine homeowners on Fairway Drive, and I have made up a packet for y'all, give you some homework. You don't get one, sorry.
It's okay.
And, you know, their comments are just here and there, just things that they've observed, so take your time reading them. They were tougher on some people than others, and, and some, we have some new people on the street, and I think they're just so delighted to be in Southern Shores that they, you know, they just overlook the water, but, you know, when you have standing water in your front yard, then you begin to say, "Well, maybe this isn't too good." And I'm delivering this personally because when we had, when we had the beginning of this back in, in 2014, we, we made a petition up of, of 98% of the homeowners on the whole street, the private part and the old part, and that petition apparently just evaporated. We never heard another word about it. I'm sorry. So, this is for you to read. You can pass it on, you can do anything that you want to it. I have a directory in there of all the homeowners, email addresses, telephone numbers, and you can contact them and talk to them directly if you have any question about what they've I, I wanted to go over just a little bit about how fast, and, and we're not trying to beat a dead horse there, I promise you're not, we're not trying to go over it again and worry about why it happened, but it did happen pretty quickly. Whenever you started this in July of 2014, it moved along from an announcement that you were going to do it to a meeting July 16th in the rain, remember that, under the tent, that was a mess. And then, a letter from you saying that there weren't any, that the only change you had was just changing a median. So, we, you know, we, we had seen the big maps, but we didn't really have anything to refer to as far as the curb and gutter, except what we pulled off the internet. Now, this is what you pull off the internet whenever you, off the website. As you can see, it's harder to read than that is up there. So, I kind of feel like we operate a little bit in ignorance. We weren't fully aware that, that there wasn't curb on both sides of the street. Now, we know it's necessary. The water is just going everywhere. We've had terrible, the mosquito pond is, is huge, and it gets bigger and bigger, it moves over into the, to the golf course. So, I'm, I'm here again just asking you to read through this, consider all the things that we brought out, and goodbye. I didn't beat the clock.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak at the public comment session, so at this time I'll close public comment. Item number four, old. Item number four, old business. Is there any old business council that you can, would like to bring up? Under new business, item A, quasi judicial land use matter, consideration of a conditional permit, CUP 17-02, application submitted by Soundside Subs for LLC to open a Jersey Mike Subs restaurant in the Marketplace Shopping Center located at 5500 North Crowton Highway. It's all in your packet, counsel. You'd like to look at it. I need to receive a recommendation from the planning board, by our planning board chairman, Mr. Williams. Good evening again, Sam.
Good evening again.
You're a popular guy tonight.
The planning board reviewed conditional use permits 17-02, and as far as background, the applicant principles were raised on the Outer Banks. This will be their fourth Jersey Mike, the second in Dare County. And they have a history of giving back to the community. With only two stores, they've given back in excess of $50,000 to schools and nonprofits. The first Jersey Mikes was here on Dare County, the second was in Elizabeth City, I believe. And so based on that, we expect them to be a good neighbor. The application we reviewed, we felt was a fine application, but we thought there ought to be a few amendments. And those amendments include items A through D from the staff report. And the recommendation is that the planning board recommends approval of the conditional use permit 17-02 as amended. Are there any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
Where is the exact location over there?
The location will be the location of the old Rita's.
Oh, Rita's, Ice?
Shop next to Starbucks.
Oh, okay.
Anything else, counsel?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
This time, I'll ask our town attorney to chair a public hearing for us on CUP 17-02.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so all of the folks who would like to be heard during this hearing will need to be sworn. And if anyone in particular, I know Mr. Haskett will testify, Mr. Hayman, who's here on behalf of the applicant, anyone else who intends to testify, if they could come forward so that the clerk can swear you in.
Counsel and the applicant will have an opportunity to question Mr. Haskett as necessary. Following Mr. Haskett's presentation, if that's the end of the town's evidence, then we'll hear from Mr. Hayman if he has any additional evidence to add. And the town, and following that, the town may question Mr. Hayman, the staff may question Mr. Hayman. And once the testimony is done, we'll hand it back to the council for consideration. And your standards in that case are to have substantial competent evidence of meeting the requirements of the ordinance for granting the conditional use permit, and to consider the findings of fact supporting your decision. Also got this public hearing, there was a sheet that was passed out. Mr. McCauley, are you here? Do you want to, are you going to provide any testimony required?
I'm here for a friend of mine who's two bill of gum he gave me at state, and he wanted me to read.
We've got him, he passed us by, he needs to be sworn in, excuse me.
Okay. You'll need to come and be sworn as well.
I can't swear to what he wrote, I'm just reading.
And that tends to be a situation that comes up for quasi judicial stuff, is that you don't have to follow the strict rules of evidence that you see in court, but we still do have a hearsay issue where you're stating what someone else.
And you can, right, you just state that when you get a testimony.
So we'll go forward with Mr. Haskett.
Thank you, Ben. Tonight's application before you is CUP 17-02, Soundside Subs IV LLC. They're seeking a conditional use permit application to open a Jersey Mike Subs in the Marketplace Shopping Center. The location is 5500 North Crowton Highway. It's zoned C General Commercial, and its existing land use, as identified by the town's currently adopted land use plan, is commercial. With respect to the surrounding land use and zoning, to the north, the property is residential, RS1, single-family residential district. To the south, it's US Highway 158, which is town of Kitty Hawk's jurisdiction. And to the east and the west, the property is commercial in the C General Commercial District. Applicable regulations from the town zoning ordinance are Article III, interpretation and definition of terms, Article IV, application of regulations, Article VI, general provisions, Article VII, schedule of district regulations, and Article X, administration and enforcement. The applicant seeks a conditional use permit to open a Jersey Mike Subs at 5500 North Crowton Highway. The proposed restaurant is to be located in the Marketplace Shopping Center, which currently contains adequate parking spaces to meet the minimum parking requirements for the proposed use, as well as all of the existing uses currently in the shopping center. Restaurants are permitted uses in the C General Commercial District, provided that a conditional use permit is granted by the town council, following a recommendation made by the town planning board. In granting any conditional use permit, the town council may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards in conformity with Article X, administration and enforcement. Before granting any conditional use permit, the town council shall make the following affirmative findings. A, that the applicant has met the requirements of the applicable provisions of the town chapter pertaining to zoning subdivision chapter and all other applicable ordinances. B, that the use as proposed will conform with the town's land use plan, and will be compatible with the area in which it is to be located, if developed in accordance with the conditions specified in the chapter and additionally required by the town council as authorized by the chapter. C, that the use will not materially endanger the public health and safety if located, were proposed and developed according to the plan submitted. And lastly, D, that the use as proposed will not overburden the town volunteer fire department's firefighting capabilities and the county water supply capacity to the town, as said facilities and capabilities will exist on the completion date of the conditional use for which the application is made. With respect to a recommendation, the land use plan identifies this area as commercial in the C General Commercial Zoning District, which is consistent with the proposed use. All applicable regulations of the zoning ordinance and all of town staff's concerns that apply to this application have been identified. As Chairperson Williams noted earlier, the town planning board unanimously recommended approval of the application, and town staff and the planning board offer the following condition for your consideration, and that is that the applicant must strictly abide by all requirements of the town code, and must also strictly comply with all other applicable local, state, and federal requirements. That concludes my staff report, Ben.
Any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Haskett?
I've got one. Initially, when we approved the Starbucks in that area, it's right there close by, of moving, part of that portion of that facility was to be demolished in something different. How's this, go to impact them, or does it?
Since this proposed use is in an area that was to be demolished, I'm assuming that they're not.
They're not going to do it.
They're not moving forward with the demolition, and since, as we talked about earlier.
Well, I just want to make sure the applicant understood that, you know, there was plans of doing something there, but we just don't know what.
Yeah, well, I'm assuming that the demolition is not moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I ask Mr. Haskett a couple of questions?
Oh, that's certainly, go ahead.
Wes, you listed the findings that this council needs to make. In your opinion, are they all met by the application?
Yes, I do.
Does anyone else have any further questions for Mr. Haskett? Mr. Hayman, do you have any questions for Mr. Haskett? Thank you, Mr. Haskett.
Thank you, Ben.
Is there anyone else from the town that's going to testify, Wes?
Apparently not.
Seeing no one, I'll ask Mr. Hayman, would you like to testify? Thank you. Come ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I appreciate you all allowing me to be here, and ultimately, everything's pretty well been covered by the members of the planning board thus far, so no need to repeat that. But I am here to answer any questions you might have. Happy to do so.
Do you have an anticipated opening date, or?
A lot of that's going to depend on how long it takes us to get our lease taken care of, but we're hoping to open prior to summer, which is why we're pushing as quickly as we can.
Like May, April, May timeframe, is that you?
April, ideally.
Anyone else have any, on the council, have any questions for Mr. Hayman? Thank you, Mr. Hayman.
Thank you.
And, Mr. McCauley, this would be your opportunity to testify.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and meeting members. My name is Steve McCauley. I'm speaking for Scott Fletcher, drafted this note to be read tonight. And he says, "My name is Scott Fletcher, I'm a resident of Southern Shores. It's a privilege to stand before you and to highly recommend approval of the application submitted by Mr. Sean Hayman to locate a Jersey Mike Sub shop at the Marketplace. Jersey Mikes was established in 1956 and is known for consistently good quality and high standards. Mr. Hayman is a well-known businessman here in Dare County, whose family has a long and successful history in the restaurant business. You may remember the former Seafair Restaurant in Naggs Head. This restaurant will employ approximately 16 persons, both locals and foreign exchange Through Mr. Hayman's guidance, contributions are also made to local charities and special causes. It is for this reason, a great food and community support, that I would like to see Mr. Hayman and Jersey Mikes welcome to Southern Shores. Thank you, and it's signed, Scott Fletcher, 64 Spender at Trail."
Does anybody on the council have any questions for Mr. McCauley?
No.
Mr. Hayman, do you have any questions for Mr. McCauley? Is there anyone else in the audience that, having heard the testimony, would like to provide testimony? Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, I'll close the public hearing portion of this and hand it back to council for consideration. I would note that if you are making a decision to adopt and grant the conditional use permit, that you adopt the findings of fact provided by staff and the recommended condition provided by staff, if you would like the condition to be applied.
Thank you, thank you, Wes.
What he said, first, make a motion.
So he's got, so Mr. McDonald has made a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the findings of fact presented by council and the recommended condition presented by staff.
Thank you, Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
All motions made and carried. Thank you. This time, we have, you close the hearing, I will close the hearing. Thank you. Counsel, in your packet, there's, in your book, there's a packet with the consideration of a bid on a secured capital project, construction bids for Palmetto Lane Capital Improvement Project. This is for council directly to July 7th, July 11th, 2017. You might want to review that carefully as far as the total price of the bid. This is a little bit of a change from what we've done in the past, that for the past three or four years, four years now, that the town manager would normally have approved these and brought them to us for our consideration, and explained to us what the total cost was as part of his total CIP, at that time, CIP budget. This, we decided recently to have these issues brought to council, and in this packet, you'll find the total cost from the two bidders, and we've made a decision tonight as to which bidder we agree with him to accept, and the bid amount we agree to accept. Any questions about that? I'll try to find the exact page for you, in case you haven't already found it. I think it's page, actually, page four. The sequence of pages, not necessarily by number. You can see there, the two contractors are RPC Contracting and his bid price, and the Marne Hill contract and their bid price. And over at the far right, the engineer's estimate, which came in, he came in slightly lower than the engineer's estimate in the bid. I need a motion to approve, to approve the bid from RPC Contracting to perform this work on Palmetto, portion of Palmetto Lane.
So moved.
I have a move from Mr. McDonald, and do I have a second? I need a second, if you want a second. A second from Mr. Holland. Is there any further discussion, counsel? Any questions about this? All in favor of accepting RPC contract, contract bid on this project?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion's made and carried to accept RPC's bid. Do you need anything else from Peter? Anything more on this, do you need anything more on this?
No, Mr. Mayor, I believe you could just execute what needs to be executed in the next few days so the project could go ahead and start.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I had one comment, I didn't get called on that. Be remiss if I didn't say, Mr. Hayman just left, but just for the, for everybody to know, Mr. Hayman's grandparents were actually the premier restaurant tours on the Out of Banks, this whole resort Out of Banks, the Haymans at the Old Arlington Hotel. So he comes from a long line of restaurant owners on the beach. Just wanted to say that.
It was a great place to eat when I was here, wasn't it? I remember that well. Thank you. This time, we have a general public comment open. Anyone else who'd like to speak or signed up? Good evening, Hal.
Mayor, counsel. I'd hope to be able to attend the first meeting of council in December. It'd be a memorable meeting. But Billy and I are moving away from Southern Shores, and it won't be possible for me to be here. I just wanted to come tonight and say that we regret very much having to leave. We bought our first flat top in Southern Shores in 1965. We came down permanently in '93. It makes this year for 24 years. Actually, I date my association with what is now Southern Shores back to shortly after World War II, when as a fighter pilot attached to the air group on the Midway, we came down here and did practice bombing and strafing and rocketry on the target, on the high ground at Crooked Back Loop. And there wasn't much here at that time. But we have a great fondness for our town, and before I would leave, I wanted to publicly express my appreciation for the privilege of serving the town council, on the town council for 10 years, six of them as mayor. of serving the town council, on the town council for 10 years, six of them as mayor. I want to say that we have a superlative staff of people in this town. People like Sheila Kane, Bonnie Swain, Wes Haskett, Chief Cole, and the town manager who is unsurpassed, in my opinion, on the Outer Banks in leading these people. Also, it's been my privilege to serve over the years with many outstanding volunteers who have given themselves instinctively to the town. And some are here tonight, and I want to mention especially Sam Williams, Ross Mitchell, Jim Connor, Larry LeHawn, Leo Hollen, Tom Bennett. These people have been wonderful volunteers, and it was my real privilege to have served with them. And I thank them very much for helping me over the years in whatever little benefit I have been to the town. Lastly, I want to say that I was very pleased with the results of the election last night and leaving Southern Shores knowing that the town is going to remain in good hands. And with that, I bid you adieu.
Thank you, Hal. I'm going to thank you, Hal, for your friendship, your service to our town so many years. I first got to know Hal well, I guess, in 2005 in Biloxi, Mississippi, working on recovery efforts for the Katrina victims. And I'd known him before that for a couple of years, but not worked with him very closely. And we went there with a church group called Carrying Hands, and I came to find out what a unbelievably dynamic person he is and what a great leader he is, and it's just been a fantastic role model for me, and I think for all of us. I want to thank you. On a different subject, later this month, I plan to meet with Mr. Connors, Councilman Nation, and myself, possibly our town manager, discuss with Mr. Connor his committee preferences, future council business, planning goals, similar to the meeting I had with Councilman Holland, the meeting of Councilman Holland I had with Councilman Nation, Councilman Newberry, and Councilman McDonald prior to their being sworn into office. This will be an off the record meeting, but it'll be something we will discuss with Mr. Connors and kind of give him an orientation time as to the council requirements and the council members' requirements. On a lighter note, I just want to say thank you to all of those who've supported my reelection bid. Our success was due to the hard work and generosity of many of you, and I appreciate that. This election outcome has reaffirmed my faith in the people of Southern Shores. We have an exceptional community, and I'm so grateful that we do have one. It's a great place to live, a great place to do business, a friendly community most all the time, and a wonderful place. I have so many friends here. A special thank you to Councilman Leo Hollen for his service to our community in so many ways and for his friendship these many years. I want to welcome Jim Connors to our council and look forward to working with him. I am pleased and proud that you have chosen me to serve as your mayor for the next four years. I thank you. At this time, I'd call on Mr. Mr. Newberry if you'd like to have any comment.
Yeah, I just have one brief comment. I attended the Gov. Ed TV Committee meeting this month, and I just wanted to remind you that Bobby Dobbs will probably be asking to attend the January meeting to discuss and walk the council through the new website that they have developed. I don't know why we need for him to walk us through it. I think it's pretty intuitive, but he wants to come and present it, so that's fine with me.
Thank you. For anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Gary, any thoughts? Chris?
I guess I wanted to, secondly, you said, Tom, I wanted to thank Mayor Denny for being so gracious. I also wanted to thank Leo. We served on the Chickahawke Board, and he urged me to get involved, and I appreciated working with him, and we'll miss him.
Thank you, Chris. Leo?
Well, first I'll thank Hal, if he's still back there.
He is.
He helped me along the way when I was in SSCA, and it was he and I that worked together to transfer the canals from the Civic Association over to the town. And so it took a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, and so we're going to miss you, Hal, and I really appreciated your guidance. Congratulations, Mayor, on your reelection. Also, I want to congratulate Jim. Now the, now the work starts, the campaign's over, we have to start governing, which it sounds like it's going to get started quick. And highly recommend, when you get a chance, to set an appointment with Peter so you can come in, sit down with staff. I know you've done some of this, but, so you learn what they do that can help you and maybe some of the things you can do to help them. And I do highly recommend that you try to, if you can, in your schedule as you move forward over the next four years, try to spend, come in at least once a week and visit with the group, see how they're doing, what are their challenges, is there some barrier that maybe you can help them get over with, but at least you'll understand what their day-to-day activities are. And that makes, that makes a big difference, and they do like seeing you come in. The other prob, about the end of January, I think, or somewhere in there, you'll get the chance to attend the local school of government, and that'll, and you'll probably, after you complete that, you'll wish you have gone through it before you started campaigning, because now you'll find out what you can do and can't do. A little emotion here. This is my last official meeting. As a meeting in December is a formality, I'll be stepping down. Jim will be coming over here. And as I, and the December meeting is just a formality, as I said, but as I transition from Councilman Holland to Resident Holland, I have a few observations. And despite the henny-bennies in the town, the town is not going to hell in a handbasket, although it does face some challenges, which I will address later. We have a strong undesignated fund balance. We've had four excellent qualified audits over the past four years. Now, the council can't really take credit for those audits. This is, these audits are performance or result is because we have a highly qualified financial director and budget director slash town manager. They're focused on what happens today-to-day. You just don't address those things when you have the audit. It's an ongoing process, and they're focused on following up on the proper accounting principles. Town has had no tax increase over the past four years. We have zero debt. That just didn't happen by accident. There was planning that did take place. Town continues to improve its infrastructure with yearly systematic investment of funds. There was a solution to the storm water issue at East Dogwood. You know, if you remember previously, water would collect and flood residents' property in the winter, it would freeze and cause a safety hazard. Now that water drains to the infiltration basement. Beach nourishment, not always a popular subject. However, the beach in front of Pelican Watch was nourished and made a great improvement in the width of it, thanks to the residents for their contribution of this project. As for the rest of the beach, we won't know its condition until the survey is completed, and I believe it's to be presented at the February meeting. Also want to compliment, we have an excellent office staff that is well-qualified and skilled in managing the town on a day-to-day basis. Our police department is excellent and does a great job in protecting the citizens. The fire department, although a contractor is well-trained and qualified for fighting fires and assisting other municipalities, they have earned their ISO ratings, which are hard to achieve, but also must work to maintain. That was the observations, but I also want to, as I leave, there's some concerns that I think not just the council, but the whole town needs to take under consideration. The first one is civility. When Mary Ellen and I moved here 16 years ago, we experienced a friendly town. When working with the SSCA, there were differences, but at the end of the day, we were, they were worked out, and not to everyone's satisfaction. We shook hands, we're still friends, moved on to the next challenge. However, in the last couple of years, that environment has changed. Today, if someone does not agree with our agenda or vision, we are attacked verbally, sometimes called names, cursed out in some instances, threats of physical violence. I've had a number of residents tell me they no longer are comfortable coming to a town meeting because of this environment. I can tell you, there have been meetings where I felt did not feel comfortable. There are residents I have worked with on various boards who no longer speak to me because of a position I may have taken on a particular issue. This lack of civility has spilled over into the local newspaper. But the end result is the image of Southern Shores has been tarnished. I hope when the new council is seated, this lack of civility will improve and our friendly town image will be restored. Second one is transparency. We've heard a lot about transparency. I support being transparent and share information available with everyone. However, I have learned that transparency can have a double meaning. The previous council was accused of having closed-door meetings and not sharing the information discussed. I can assure you, that did not happen, and I did not participate in such meetings. I've learned these same accusers are now having behind-the-scenes meetings, and talking points are developed and shared with select people. I do know, have not received any of these talking points, but do know they exist. It appears in this situation is, don't do as I do, do as I say. And I hope as the council moves forward, if these meetings do continue, the talking points information will be shared with the entire council. Long-range planning. We've heard a lot about it. I'm not against long-range planning, as I have done my share in my previous career. It's not always a panacea for success. There must be a balance between long-term and short-term planning. If you focus totally on long range and ignore the short term, it's a recipe for failure. The old adage in my world at that time, and I saw a lot of that happen, was paralysis by analysis. I voted against the long-range plan because the council did not want to take ownership of the plan. I felt it could be used as another tool to possibly discredit our town staff. It is my opinion that the council takes the ownership and collaborates the town, with the town staff to develop. Ultimately, it's a council's responsibility. My last concern is the respect for the town staff. We have an excellent town staff. They work very hard every day to make our town an outstanding success model. However, in the last couple of years, they have had to endure some emails that were unprofessional, sometimes rude, rude to the point these emails are causing a hostile work environment for them. Unfortunately, with emails, you never know who is receiving copies. I would suggest to everyone, if you have an issue with a situation, rather than firing off an email, come to the town hall and discuss it professionally with the town manager and any staff. Remember, honey catches a lot more flies than vinegar. Now the challenges. Yes, the town has them, and here's about five I've got. Addressing cut-through traffic, not a simple solution for it, but it's an issue that has to be addressed. Assisting with the building of a new fire station, this is not a, not a, this is a need, not a want. Beach nourishment, not an expensive project, but the beaches must be protected. That is why our guests come to our town. Many of you moved here because of the beach. Development of the multipass for the Dogwoods to make a safe area, and the continued improvement of our infrastructure to address stormwater issues. These challenges can be accomplished, but our town must come together as a team. The vote yesterday sends a message that the residents want the bickering and divisiveness to end. Remember what team stands for. Together, everyone achieves more. Thanks, and may the wind be at your back.
Thank you, Leo. Very well put. Appreciate that.
Sorry for the emotion.
That's okay. I have to forget you. I want to once again thank Hal Denny for his service to our town and thank all of you for being here tonight. I think it was a very positive meeting, and I appreciate that. Council, if there's no further comments, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.